This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
Interim City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Dean, I do believe Mr. Mayor will be a few minutes late. And Commissioner Reed as well will be a few minutes late. And Mayor Collins.
Here. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage in your participation. Would you rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Minutes from 2:123, 2:623, 2:1523 were received. Do we have any corrections, comments? Minutes will stand as submitted. Board appointments. I am recommending the following board appointments. Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. Reappointment of Rachel Ball-Weber to a second term on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board as an engineering or architectural representative. Term will expire January 31, 2026. Downtown TIF Advisory Board. Appointment of Seth Brandenberger to a first term on the Downtown TIF Advisory Board as a business improvement district representative. Appointment of Brett Charles to a first term on the Downtown TIF Advisory Board as a Lewis and Clark County resident representative. City County Consolidated Parks Board. Appointment of Doug Haberman to a first term on the City County Consolidated Parks Board as a city residence representative. Term will expire September 30, 2025. Citizen Conservation Board. Appointment of Lori Fitzgerald to a first term on the Citizen Conservation Board as a citizen at large. Term will expire February 28, 2024. Appointment of Diana Hammer to a single term on the Citizen Conservation Board as citizen at large. Term will expire February 28, 2024. Appointment of Richard Sloan to a first term on the Citizen Conservation Board as a citizen at large. Term will expire February 28, 2024. Appointment of Mark Judeman to a first term on the Citizen Conservation Board as citizen at large. Term will expire February 28, 2026. Appointment of Devon Malaysia to a first term on the Citizen Conservation Board as a citizen at large. Term will expire February 28, 2026. Appointment of Jason Solong to a first term on the Citizen Conservation Board as a citizen at large. Term will expire February 28, 2026. Okay. Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Would we move these individually or all at once?
All at once.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion if I could get a glass of water. I'm just teasing. So, I would move the following board, acceptance of the following board appointments. Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. The reappointment of Rachel Ball-Weber to a second term on this board as an engineering or architecture representative. Term will expire on January 31, 2026. Appointment of Seth Brandenberger to a first term on the Downtown TIF Advisory Board as a business improvement district representative. Appointment of Brett Charles to a first term on the Downtown TIF Advisory Board as a Lewis and Clark County resident representative. Appointment of Doug Haberman to a first term on the City County Consolidated Parks Board as a city representative. Term will expire September 30, 2025. Appointment of Lori Fitzgerald to a first term on the Citizen's Conservation Board as a citizen at large. Term will expire February 28, 2024. Appointment of Diana Hammer to a single term on the Citizen's Conservation Board as a citizen at large. Term will expire February 28, 2024. Appointment of Richard Sloan to a first term on the Citizen's Conservation Board as a citizen at large. Term will expire February 28, 2024. Appointment of Mark Judeman to a first term on the Citizen's Conservation Board as a citizen at large. Term will expire February 28, 2026. Appointment of Devon Malaysia to a first term on the Citizen's Conservation Board as a citizen at large. Term will expire February 28, 2026. And the appointment of Jason Solong to a first term on the Citizen's Conservation Board as a citizen at large. Term will expire February 28, 2026.
Second.
Second. Oh, gosh. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Claims. Approval for the subdivision of the fiscal year 2024 Montana Department of Transportation, MDT 5311 grant request for capital equipment as ranked by the Transportation Advisory Committee. We're going to do the, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to point out that on item H, the staff report says that the commission recommends to move to approve, table, or deny a resolution of intent to vacate a portion of alley right away north of 1940 University Street. The staff recommendation in that item should be a recommendation to approve. With that, Mayor, staff recommends approval of the consent agenda.
Of that item?
Of the entire consent agenda, Mayor.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Do we have any public comments? Okay. It's been moved and, do we have a second?
It hasn't been moved, but I'd be happy to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Please go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda items A through I. Do I need to read them all, or is that sufficient?
I think it's sufficient, Commissioner.
Cool.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Commission proposals from the, communications proposals from the commission. Any of that? Okay. Anything online? No. Report of the City Attorney.
Mayor Commissioners, I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Thanks. Report from the interim City Manager.
Mayor Commissioners, I have nothing to report this evening.
Great. Communications from Helena Citizens Council, HCC Representative Nancy Perry. Are you online or in the audience? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I do not see Nancy in the online participants.
Okay, we will move on, and when she gets on, please call my attention.
Sure.
Thank you. Regular items. Consider acceptance of federal financial assistance award domestic grant 23-DG11011500-007. Director Smith and/or Mr. Langsather. You have the floor.
Mayor Collins, Commissioners, the U.S. Department of Agriculture Helena Lewis and Clark National Forest has awarded the city 13,125 to mechanically obliterate a number of old Jeep trails and motorcycle trails that occur on the white addition to the open land system. Several of these old Jeep and motorcycle trails are contributing surface flow annually to the La Grande Canyon Trail and causing functionality issues. So, conceptually, this project was approved by the Helena City Commission in the 2020 major projects process. It sat on the shelf for three years, and now we have funding to move the project forward. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Langsather, for the report. I appreciate the finding the funding to make this happen. The one question I would have for you is public outreach relative to letting folks know that this will be going on when you pull the trigger on the project, so to speak. What will that look like?
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Logan, the initial public outreach was in when we presented the white trail plan to the public in the 2020 major projects process, but we will additionally post information on the city website and on the parks website as we prepare to actually have active work on the ground, which will probably obviously be when the ground thaws out in the spring. I don't think it'll be a long-duration project, and our hope is to get some of these sites to start to rehabilitate and not be the unsightly scars that they are currently.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Any other comments from the commission? Any public comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Yeah, yeah, motion. Come on, Commissioners.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move acceptance of federal financial assistance award domestic grant 23-DG-11011500-7.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Consider curb cut variance requests for 700 Coal Avenue Transportation Director or...
You know, we got to keep you on your toes, Mayor.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, we have a curb cut variance request for 700 Coal Avenue. So, the applicant is requesting a variance from the part of code that requires the cuts to be at least 25 feet apart. They are allowed to have the two openings. Code requires them to be 25 feet apart. If you look at your site map that's included, they'd only be about eight foot apart mainly because that's where their garage doors currently exist that they have access to from Coal Avenue now. So, the applicant does plan to financially guarantee the installation of the new sidewalk curb and gutter along Coal as part of their plat application, which I think is coming up after this, with the intent to sell one of the lots on the McHugh side in order to financially guarantee the installation of those items.
You bet.
And so, I think that's all I got. Staff would recommend a motion to approve the curb cut variance request for 700 Coal Avenue.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead. Commissioner.
Thank you. Just a quick question for Mr. Kui. What would the impact be to someone who is trying to walk down the sidewalk just to help the public understand a little bit this variance? Does it have any impact on mobility access on that street?
Sure. Mayor and Commissioner Reed, so I think this would actually improve mobility. Currently, there are no sidewalks on Coal Avenue there on that side of the road. This would install sidewalks and a, I think it's a five-foot boulevard as well, which also doesn't exist there yet.
Thank you, Mr. Kui. So, just to be clear, the curb cuts themselves do not have any negative impact on mobility?
Not in my opinion, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion. Commissioners.
Mr. Mayor.
We've got a big list, so...
Standby.
Time is of the essence.
Got to zoom in here. I'm, I would move to approve a curb cut variance request for 700 Coal Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Can we just turn everyone's mic off for a second?
Mic's on.
All right. Reset.
That's the technical difficulties we were talking about earlier. Okay. If no further discussion, Madam Clerk, and my mic is not on. I got to go this close now? Go ahead.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. C. Consider preliminary plat for the 700 Coal Avenue minor subdivision creating three new lots from one acre and to adopt the findings of fact and the conditions contained therein for the property legally described as a portion of the southeast quarter, of the southwest quarter of Section 19. Township 10 North, Range 3 West, Lewis and Clark County. Senior Planner Ray, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Just waiting for the projector to load up.
It's on.
Just warming up. All right, I'll get started. Mayor and Commissioners, tonight you're being asked to consider the preliminary plat application for a minor subdivision, a three-lot minor subdivision at 700 Coal Avenue. This is a vicinity map of the subject area. Oops, let me change which screen is being shared. Can I ask for your assistance really quickly? I'm really sorry.
Please be patient as we have our expert working on this issue.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a self-professed bad millennial. I'm not good with technology sometimes. It takes a village. I apologize. All right. I think it's working now.
Okay.
Okay. Where it was. Okay. Okay, so, this is a vicinity map of the subject property shown in blue. The process, I just want to go over this with you all so that you're all aware because it is separate and distinct from how we handle major subdivision applications. This is more of a truncated process. With it, there is no planning board hearing before this comes to you for consideration. There is no therefore legal, and this is also not conducted as a public hearing. The application is just reviewed as a regular item. There is no legal advertising requirement, although we do still provide notice to all property owners within 150 feet of the subject property. And those notices were sent out earlier this month, and the property was also signed appropriately so that everybody in the vicinity knew what was coming before you. This application also critically doesn't require a full environmental assessment. Instead, the applicant is just required to provide a summary of probable impacts for what may occur with future development of the property. And by way of application background, the applicant, Jason Moyer, submitted his application last year for a three-lot minor subdivision. The property that he owns is approximately one acre in size, and it's located at the northeast corner of Coal Avenue and McHugh Lanes. This application, because it is three or more lots, did have to go before the parks board for consideration of parkland dedication, and that board did meet on the first of this month and unanimously recommended approval of the cash-in-loue payment that the applicant seeks to provide with final plat. Currently, the property is developed with just a single-dwelling unit residential use. It is zoned R3 residential, which is one of our higher-density residential districts, and it is bordered to the north and east and west by other R3 zone properties. To the north, they have a single-dwelling unit use as well. To the east is a mobile home park, and to the west is condominiums. To the south, it's zoned public lands and institutions, and that's where Nature Park is located. These are just some property photos of the area, and I apologize for people in the room behind me that maybe can't see these rendered so well. But the picture on the left is looking north along McHugh. So, Jason Moyer's property is located on the east where you see the hedgerows, and then to the west is the condominiums that I mentioned. The picture on the right is looking south at Nature Park. And you see pictures here looking through the area where the two proposed lots are proposed to be located on Jason's property. On the other side of that is the mobile home park that I mentioned, and then the other picture is looking westward, and you see part of Nature Park and some of the condos. So, this is the preliminary plat detail. What this doesn't reflect is the fact that, as was just brought before you, there is going to be sidewalk installed along the Coal Avenue frontage of the property now that they've received the curb cut variance. But you can see here the breakup of the parcel into three distinct lots. And then this is a better plan, the site plan, that shows you the infrastructure installation that's proposed by the applicant. I do want to note here that you see some lines on the eastern side of the property, and that denotes where there's going to be stormwater detention. The property does decline on the eastern side of the boundary, so they want to assure that that is addressed through this development proposal as well. With regard to subdivision review for this application and assessing it against all the different factors, there were no significant adverse impacts found. There are, however, two recommendations for local services impacts that are being brought before you. They relate to the sidewalk installations that have already been discussed this evening with Chris Kui's presentation, the first of which is to install sidewalks along McHugh Lane, which is to be done before a final plat, and the second relates to the infrastructure for sidewalks that's going to be installed along Coal Avenue. As was already mentioned, this is going to, it's planned to be done within one year of approval of a final plat, which affords the applicant some time to sell one of the parcels to fund the installation of that sidewalk infrastructure on Coal. In looking at these applications for subdivisions, we do a growth policy analysis, and this property is classified on the future land use map in the 2019 City of Helena Growth Policy as being urban, which allows for predominantly moderate to high, high-intensity residential uses alongside some lower-intensity compatible commercial uses with the potential for certain public uses as well, like schools and worship facilities and parks. This is consistent with the zoning for R3 residential that is already applied to the property. And also, looking at this proposal, we want to review it against the goals and objectives of the growth policy. This proposal definitely is backed up and conforms with the ones that are found in the 2019 growth policy with relation to the provision of housing in the community and the efficient use of our infrastructure and services in trying to promote infill development near to those and also support our transportation and do so in a manner that supports multimodal transportation opportunities, and it is in conformance with our complete streets policy and promotes connectivity to parks and trails. We have received in the past two business days three public comments on this proposal from the Adjacent Condominium Association residents, as I understand things. The three of those I have distilled down here for you into four different areas, the first of which addresses congestion and speeding in proximity to the subject property at the intersection of McHugh and Coal. The second raised concerns over flooding that occurred this past summer on July 3. As you all recall, that big storm event, there was some flooding on the subject property. One of the commenters also spoke to what they deemed to be deposition issues with the accumulation of materials in nearby culverts coming from Nature Park and going northward into the valley. There were also concerns brought forward about the density of the future development on the two new properties should they be created, and the last really relates to just asking staff to look at the side or the right-of-way widths for both Coal and McHugh because the actual asphalt is narrow on both streets. As I understand things, Coal Avenue does already have signage in place that states that you can't park along it adjacent to this property. And then along McHugh, a similar consideration could be made at another time about only allowing, say, parking on one side of the street. But those were the concerns. I did just want to note, too, for the record, that any development proposals that are brought forward for these two new parcels, there are lots that are looking to be created, or even in the event that the application doesn't proceed with a final plat, have to be built in conformance with our adopted zoning codes, our building codes, and our engineering and design standards, which will all safeguard public health, safety, and the general welfare. And with that, the recommendation before you tonight is to move to approve the preliminary plat for the 700 Coal Avenue Minor Subdivision, creating three new lots from one acre and to adopt the findings of fact and the conditions contained therein for the property legally described as a portion of the south, sorry, I'm reading this from another screen, southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 19 Township 10 North, Range 3 West, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. With that, I'm happy to take any questions. I know that the applicant, Jason Moyer, is present this evening. I have a few questions of him, and I believe that their applicant representative, Ryan Kasni, is also available for questions you have of him. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question if nobody else does.
Please go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And for Ms. Ray, I think you said it. I just want to make sure I understood correctly. The preliminary plat is one issue. Building is a separate issue, and so things like concerns over flooding would be addressed, there would be requirements for addressing potential flooding when the site was developed. Is that accurate?
Yes. Mayor and Commissioners, during the building permit review, that would definitely be addressed when the Engineering Division staff have a chance to review the application against stormwater regulations and other engineering and design standards that would apply to the proposal.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. An apologies for being late. I was getting off work. And I hope that you, I don't know if you answered this at the beginning or not, is with this request, is a traffic impact study required, or at what point would that be required?
Mayor and Commissioners, a traffic impact study is only required when the traffic, the trip generations are anticipated to exceed 200 trips per day. This proposal came in far under that. I have to look at my staff report to actually tell you the precise number that the applicant brought forward and what we assessed it at, but it was under that threshold. brought forward and what we assessed it at, but it was under that threshold.
Okay, and then a follow-up on that, um, and I don't know if Director Knopki might be the one to actually answer this, but one of the public comments, um, that we received talked about a request, um, to change the yield sign to a three-way stop, basically. Um, at what point would we consider that to mitigate some of the concerns that, um, the public comments have brought up?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, being as that was not something that was presented in the application, I would rather not comment on that and would defer that to Director Knopki if he's available. Oh, Chris.
Mr. Cooley.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, I mean, we could certainly look at, uh, whether turning it into a three-way stop would be warranted. Um, I don't know that as part of this process that it would warrant a study at this time, but, uh, it's definitely something that we could look into.
Okay. Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Mayor Collins, Commissioners, uh, my name is Homer Young. I live at 2555 McHugh Lane, and, uh, I have submitted written, written, uh, comments on the proposal with two attachments. One is a picture, a photo that shows the flood prior to the peak, um, last summer in my backyard, and the other is a copy of the JCH subdivision, which shows the drainage ditch that passes from the north entrance of, northwest entrance of the McHugh Trailer Court, all the way to Cole Avenue. And I would just, I'm not here to protest the particular subdivision, just to bring a personal insight as to the floodwaters I've seen flow through that area since I've lived there. I've lived there since, uh, June of nineteen seventeen, almost said nineteen seventeen. Okay? And, uh, with that, uh, since I've lived there, water has flown in that ditch behind my house, 365, except for it got very low and almost mud during the, um, drought last summer, when it was pretty severe. The flows are sufficient that it flows freely in the wintertime unless we have extended days of sub-zero temperatures. So it's a, it's a fairly decent flow. And one of the videos that I've submitted, I also submitted three videos, one of the videos shows a normal flow that I took, uh, pictures of in September of 2019. I also have, uh, pictures of, uh, excess flow that topped, uh, the driveway into McHugh Trailer Court, Trailer Park, three, three times in 2019, and, uh, anytime it rains, the level behind my house will raise anywhere from inches to several feet. This last, uh, July was the worst I've ever seen. It was very high. In one of the videos, you will see, uh, a pickup that goes through the, the entrance into the park. It's a full-size four-wheel-drive pickup, and the water is up to the hubs, past the hubs on the pickup, and that's prior to the, the peak flow. The peak flow was even higher than that. Uh, people quit driving there, they stopped and turned around and left.
Uh, I'm sir, I'm sorry I didn't tell you, but public comments are usually two minutes?
Two minutes, okay, I'm just about done here. Uh, like I say, I'm not here to, 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 uh, to put that away. The, the original, uh, ditch was, like I say, ran all the way up to Cole Avenue, and at some point in time, and that's in my comments, that ditch was filled in and replaced with a thirty-inch culvert. I have no idea if that was approved or if it was just done, to add extra parking spot, uh, trailer spots in the trailer court, but, uh, that action forced water over into the lots one, two, and three, the proposed lots on one, two, three of 700 Cole. And every, every time we've had large flows, water flows through that area, it turns into a small lake. So I take a little bit of personal observance, difference of opinion on. The staff comment said, um, that, that the lots are not with any natural drainage area, and I, I would say that, that filling in that ditch has made that area a natural drainage area, drainage area, and that the, uh, that that ditch was in fact, the Last Chance Gulch crick rerouted through that area. And that's pretty much my comments, unless you have questions.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comments?
Make this quick. Um, good evening, Mayor Collins and City Commissioners. My name is Lisa Claiborne. My husband and I are prospective buyers of one of the lots in question. Um, we are looking to purchase one of the lots to build a single-family home to stay within Helena's city limits. As you know, property and lots are hard to find these days, and we decided to look for potential lots within the city limits to take advantage of infill, which utilizes and maximizes land space. We currently own a small, single-family home within the city limits but have outgrown it, and we are looking for a larger, single-family home for our family. Our existing home would be put back into the housing market and provide an excellent starter for first-time home buyers. If there is any traffic concerns, please understand our single-family residents will add only one, will only add two to three vehicles that would be parked in our driveway or garage. Um, any flooding concerns, as I know that is a, a natural culvert, and any culverts need to be cleared for natural flow of water. Thank you for your time and opportunity for me to provide additional information about the proposed plat at 700 Cole Avenue, and hope you will support and move to approve this proposal and allow us to move forward with a due pass. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no, uh, hands raised, no written public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
I feel like I would do it, Mr. Mayor, but Commissioner Logan is so excellent at the long ones, I wouldn't want to take that away from you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. So, make sure I'm on the right, uh...
Right page.
Yep, so I would, uh, move to conditionally approve the preliminary plat for the 700 Cole Avenue Minor Subdivision, creating three new lots from one acre, and to adopt the findings of fact and the conditions contained therein for the property legally described as a portion of the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 19 Township 10 North Range 3 West Lewiston-Clark County, Montana.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Mr. Mayor, um, I'm going to be supporting this, um, because, well, one, it, it does align with our growth policy, and, um, we obviously need more housing, and I think this is, it's within the areas that, that we're hoping continue to, to develop. But I will say that I would be really interested if we could, um, and this is for staff, I think that to address some of the concerns with, um, traffic, which I think are valid and were really good public comments, um, especially as this area continues to develop, um, if we could get some sort of analysis to, to determine if that three-way stop, um, would, would make the area safer, I think that that would be a wise thing to do, um, because I think those are valid concerns that we, we really should address. Chris Cooley's giving me a thumbs up, so, thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing fund to the City of Helena Open Lands Parks and Recreation Department for rehabilitation of the fire tower. Woo-hoo! Oh! Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, so the application before you tonight, I think everybody is well aware of the situation of the fire tower, that it sustained some severe damage in 2016 with an arson event, and there have been other spates of vandalism to it over the years, as with, uh, age deterioration over time. Um, the staff with the Lewiston-Clark County Historic Preservation Office have been working valiantly to try to secure grant funding just to get the final $74,650 required to begin the re, their rehabilitation work this summer. Um, having been unsuccessful in those attempts, uh, they stepped forward, uh, with the blessing of the City Parks Department to seek the outstanding money so that they can proceed with those activities. They applied for funding late last year, and the board met on January 12th, 2023, the Downtown Tax Increment Financing Advisory Board, I should say, and unanimously recommended approval seven to zero for, uh, full funding for this application. Um, the amount of money, just in context for the overall cost, um, it does constitute about 27% of the overall rehabilitation cost. It's a very costly endeavor for a building that was built with, um, as I recall and I'll defer to the Historic Preservation for the Officer for the County on this, but a few hundred bucks, maybe? Yeah. Oh, no, I, sorry, I meant when originally constructed in 1874, but nonetheless, um, this is, yeah, this is an iconic structure, and the symbol of our city, and so they are requesting these funds from you this evening.
Thank you, uh, Planner Ray. Commissioners, any comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I might add that they, uh, they built it in less than ten days as well, so, um, it's quite a, it's quite a structure. I'm going to be, uh, obviously supporting this. Uh, I'd, I'd also like to say, uh, thanks to Ms. Tardo, I know she's gone to great lengths to try, try to secure, uh, funding to, to make this happen. It was significant damage that was sustained, um, in 2016, and, uh, clearly iconic to the city, um, and the community, and, uh, so I appreciate the efforts of Ms. Tardo and staff in, uh, in this effort to rehabilitate our fire tower. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. Any other comments?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to applaud the work of, of, um, staff and Ms. Tardo for really working to get to this point, um, in terms of finding, funding, because it feels like a full-circle moment, um, this was something that got brought up on the very first budget that we were part of, and Commissioner Logan, um, has also championed it for a very long time. So I think that I'll be supporting it, not just because it's an important thing to do, but, um, I think that emblematic of the fact that it's our community mascot, um, in, in many ways, and, um, ensuring that it is there for future generations is important.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, Ms. Tardo, we thank you for all your hard work, and, um, Commissioner Logan did say that they built it in ten days, meaning rehabilitation should take less than that. I'm just saying what he said, so... All right, uh, entertain a motion. Oh, do we have any public comments? I apologize. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment online.
Okay, now, uh...
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion. This one's easy, I think I can manage this.
Please go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to the City of Helena's Open Lands Parks and Recreation Department for rehabilitation of the fire tower.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean. Aye. Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing fund to Livery Square LLC for facade improvement at 534 North Last Chance Gulch and 23 Neil Avenue. Planner Ray, you're working for your money today.
Always, Mayor, thank you.
Go ahead.
So as you said, the, um, application before you is to, uh, distribute downtown TIF funding toward Livery Square LLC. They originally submitted an application in late 2022 for $150,000 toward facade improvements of the property. So this, as you mentioned, is located at, uh, 534 North Last Chance Gulch and 23 Neil Avenue. It's technically two different structures, one historic, one newer, um, but, um, it is for the public's benefit, it is generally located at what is known as Mini Malfunction Junction, so, per, perspective there. Um, the overall cost for all the renovations in total are over $4.3 million, so this is a small amount of money in relation to the overall scope of the project, um, and hopefully it will, uh, grow a great way to enliven that corner of the downtown district, arguably one of the gateway points into the downtown. Um, again, as with the previous application, the, um, Downtown Tax Increment Financing Advisory Board did unanimously recommend funding approval for this application. However, given that they had a finite source of funds, and they recommended full funding approval for the fire tower project, um, the amount before you tonight for consideration in the resolution is only $136,608. So it's near their full request, but not fully there, um, just so that they could expend what they had available between the two. Um, so with that, um, if you have any questions of me, I'm happy to answer them. Uh, the applicant, uh, Andrew Gordon, who is part of Livery Square LLC, is also present if you have questions of him. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms., uh, Ray, comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, this might be a question for the applicant, I don't know, but I'm just curious, I know, um, in the materials it said that they're looking for commercial tenants and, and businesses, but not necessarily medical, um, tenants like part of it used to be. Um, do we know who, what, what type of potential tenants might occupy the space?
Mayor and Commissioners, yes, and I will defer to Andrew Gordon on that. He can tell you about his plans for the property if you so wish.
Great.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Thank you, Ms. Ray. Do we have any public comments?
Mayor, Commissioners, thanks for having me here. I'm proud to be a part of this awesome project in downtown, seeing it as a hometown Helena kid. So, um, Commissioner, to answer your question, the type of businesses there, we are in the process of repositioning the property right now from professional medical, as it historically has been for, you know, the last, we'll say, thirty years or so. Um, it's going to remain professional office. Uh, the renderings that you guys see in your packet, um, have a very sort of specific retail look. Um, those are, you know, preliminary conceptual, we're still working on it with our architectural firm. Um, we, while it has possibilities from a retail perspective, we believe that it's best positioned to remain sort of professional, uh, office space, but not as specialized medical, um, as it historically has been, so... Yeah, you bet. Any other questions?
No. Are you done with your presentation?
Yeah, it wasn't much of a presentation. I guess, I'll, I'll tell you real quickly, um, I'm just happy that it aligns with the downtown master plan. Um, it was identified as a key focal point, as everybody that lives here knows, and three of the five guiding principles, I think it absolutely meets the mark. Um, downtown is connected to the community, it's a desirable place to live, and it is alive, and I couldn't be more excited about revitalizing that corner as sort of the last linkage at the gateway to the Gulch, uh, from Great Northern to the walking mall and everything that's going on down south, so, thank you very much.
You bet. Any other public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to Livery Square LLC for facade improvements at 534... That's the rest of my...
North Last Chance.
Oh, North Last Chance, it cut off on my...
Gulch and 23 Neil.
Eh, Last Chance Gulch and 23 Neil.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, um, just a brief comment, I'm going to be supporting this, um, motion. I think this is a really great example of, um, how cool TIF districts actually can be because of the return on investment for the community. Um, we're not necessarily going to see it, you know, in the next year, but this will bring, um, additional tax base to the City of Helena for us to continue to promote, um, all of the services and resources that, that we can here in the city, while also, really, um, I mean, the whole point of TIF districts is to eliminate blight, and if, just seeing their proposal, um, if that's not eliminating blight, I don't know what is. Um, so really excited about this project, um, and looking forward to see the revitalization of an important corner in downtown.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, yeah, I'd like to thank the applicant and the team, I think, uh, and also to the staff that's been helping with the downtown urban renewal district TIF advisory board. Commissioner Dean's exactly right, eliminating blight but redeveloping in downtown. It's the heart of our community, and it's the gateway to the Gulch. I think it's, uh, the, from the past, uh, investments that have been made, uh, through the TIF fund and through the city have, um, encouraged and empowered other developers to... to look at Helena and show that Helena's open for business.
Thank you. It's been moved and, uh, has it been seconded? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. At this time, we will call on HCC Nancy Perry. You have the floor. I apologize, Mr. Alvarez. Ms. Perry, you have the floor. Is, is she here?
She is here. I'm trying to unmute myself.
Well, we can hear you.
I'm pretty low tech. Can you hear me now, sir?
Loud and clear.
Okay. I am late because I was down at the, the, um, legislature, um, beating them up about a voter registration bill, but I'm back now. Okay, so good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This is Nancy Perry from HCC District Two. Our last HCC meeting was on Wednesday of last week, and we had three kind of interesting things that happened in that, um, meeting. Your Clerk of Commission, Danae, came to talk with us about the boards and standing committees. She tried to explain the reasons for these recent changes in term limits for HCC members. She said you folks are planning a spring work session where you're going to be discussing the boards, and that you may be reconsidering the length of terms for all members at that time. HCC is very interested in our role on standing committees and boards. At every HCC meeting, each member who serves on a board or committee reports on what has happened on his board or committee since the last time we met. Uh, we look forward to hearing what you decide after your spring work session. Uh, Danae got lots of questions, and she was very patient about answering them all. We really appreciated her visit. Uh, second, we're forming a committee to help our Treasurer, Nolan Harris, write the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget report, which is a huge task. And the third thing is, three HCC members attended the interviews with the candidates for city manager, asking them questions submitted by members of, of the HCC. We were impressed with how professional the process of selecting a new city manager has been, and really favorably impressed by each of the three candidates' answers to our questions. The three members told us that they were responsible for giving you their comments on the interviews by last Friday, so I expect you've either received those comments, or if not, you'll be receiving them very soon. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. We did receive those comments.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a brief question for her to bring back to the HCC?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Um, Ms. Perry, um, a, a quick question. We received, um, a, uh, I guess, recommend, a recommendation from the HCC, um, this weekend, um, regarding the ARPA funding, and I'm, I'm wondering if, and don't feel like you have to answer this question now, maybe collect the answer and get back to us if it's possible. Um, will the HCC be, I guess, revising or providing additional comments, um, following our next admin meeting? Um, the, the next steps were for Commissioners to gather any additional or, or, well, basically any other additional items to consider for ARPA, and then we'll start working through those, um, not just those applications that, that we had received, um, after we narrowed down the, the outside applications, um, which was all the recommendations spoke to. So I just want to be sure that the HCC realizes that there will be additional considerations, and that's not necessarily the final list, I don't think, um, for our ARPA considerations.
Right. That's interesting that you brought that up. I, I'll certainly go back to them. I'm assuming that they will probably want to listen to the ones, the additional ones that you added to the list, uh, and maybe poll the, the members again and see now how, now which one do you think is the most important. Uh, thank you very much for mentioning that, and I will bring that to the meeting.
Thanks, Ms. Perry.
Uh, just to re, just to clarify something, it's not about which one is most important, just that it, uh, some added, but it's not on the level of importance, just to clarify that.
Yeah, I misspoke.
Okay.
Which ones that we would, let me see how to say, what we, which ones, we were putting the order that we, we considered and the, the ones that we really wanted to see addressed. And I think that the, what you got had all sign, kinds of fancy little pie charts showing you how we were, how we felt about each of the requests, isn't that true? Was that the one you saw?
Yes, that is what we received.
Right, okay. So we, we will have to then maybe recreate those if the additional ones that you have have changed the people's feelings, and maybe they don't, um, feel as strong about one or another after they see the list that you have. So I'll, I will take that back to them and, and, uh, I'll let you know, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
And thank you, Danae, for getting me on. It's my fault that I was late.
You're very welcome, Ms. Perry.
Okay. Public hearings. Consider a resolution granting conditional use permit to allow a residence, multi-dwelling units, three or more units, use in the res, R-two residential zoning district for property legally described as lot eight through sixteen in block five, six, two of the original Helena Town Site, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. Manager Burton or Planner Alvarez or Director Brink, you have the floor.
Mayor and Commission, thank you. This is, I am Michael Alvarez. I'm a planner with the Community Development Department, and as you just stated, this is for a conditional use permit at three oh four Clancy Street. And more specifically, this is to consider a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a residence, multiple dwelling units, three or more units, use in the R-two residential zoning district for property legally described as lots eight through sixteen in block five sixty-two of the original Helena Town Site. This property is generally located on the north side of Clancy, northeast of the intersection with Sparta Street. Um, it's up there by the water facility, um, and it's also located in the historic district. Um, the applicant contends that the residence on the property is multiple dwelling units residence, and that the current total number of units is four. Um, this CUP is to allow four units. The city doesn't have a record of the residence being split, and an inspection performed by the city of Helena Building Department concluded that the unit had either not previously been split or had not previously been split correctly. Uh, the city does have four valid and existing addresses at this location, um, and the city would like to see its files basically accurately reflect the use and activity on the property. Um, so this is, uh, our, our best path forward for, um, having our records reflect what is, uh, the apparent current use on the property. Um, and so a, in an R-two zoning district, a CUP is required for multiple dwelling units residence use. So, um, a multiple dwelling units residence is a building that contains three or more dwelling units for occupancy by three or more groups living separately from each other. Um, it is the intent, um, of the R-two district where this is, property is located, that, um, these districts provide for residential dwellings and limited non-residential development that protects and enhances the residential nature of the area. In the urban category, um, this category, uh, as taken from our growth policy, this category includes predominantly moderate to high-density residential uses, and may include public uses such as schools, churches, and open lands such as parks, and occasional commercial uses that serve the immediate area or a relatively small and low intensity. The rest of this definition is extended out to the county for that map, so I'll skip. Um, here's a site map, a aerial photograph, um, so you can get an idea. Um, the building in question is the rear one. Um, I do have one thing to apologize for in the staff report. I refer to the barn on the property as a dilapidated structure. It is actually a, um, contributing historic structure. So I apologize, um, to Ms. Tardo. Um, the, um, uh, here are the plans for the proposed split. Um, the, um, this building permit, um, has, was submitted some, um, basically, they were performing this work, um, and had a stop-work order while we asked them to provide a building permit, um, and that is what has prompted this process, um, through the conditional use permitting, or now with the zoning review of that, to have them go through the conditional use permitting process. Here's the original, um, plat. So, um, to evaluate a conditional use permit, um, the, uh, standards that need to be met are set forth in eleven, three, four, Section A. Um, and in Section B, uh, are the factors that are used to determine whether the standards in Section A are met. And Section C informs us that any adverse impacts on the standards of Section A may be used to justify the denial of a permit or the placement of conditions on that permit. Um, you have a full outline of, um, Section eleven, three, four, B, um, in your staff report. I'm just gonna highlight, uh, some of the findings here. Um, the proposal contains no new structures or changes in the footprints of existing structures. Uh, the work does not trigger a historic demolition review process. Um, the facility doesn't meet some of the current standards of the code for multiple dwelling units residences. However, the city is not recommending conditions beyond those required for the building permit. The city recognizes that a use of multiple dwelling units residence likely predates the current code requirements that would be triggered with a change of use. Uh, this property does not have a sidewalk. Um, this property is located near the Helena Trail system. There are adequate onsite parking spots, um, and a multiple dwelling unit residence would be required to have a landscape parking lot. However, with no new buildings and no proposed changes to the existing parking facility, the building permit will not trigger the need, uh, for this facility to be upgraded. Uh, and the city is not requesting the installation of any new facilities as a condition of granting the CUP. We're just really trying to get our records on the same page with what's going on there. Uh, this was legally noticed in the Helena IR. Neighbor notices were mailed to adjacent property owners, and a sign was placed on the premises, and no public comments were received for this proposal. This was heard, uh, by the zoning commission, um, last month on, uh, the fourteenth, and approval of a resolution granting a conditional use permit, uh, was the recommendation. The recommendation was approval. And with that, I'll take your question. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Comments or questions from the Commission? Public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
I have no public comment online, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I will, uh, move to approve a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a residence, multiple dwelling units, three or more units, use in the R-two zoning district for property legally described as lots eight, eight dash sixteen in block five, six, two of the original Helena Town Site, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, with the following conditions. One, a building permit must be submitted within one year, and two, all conditions must have been met within one year of CUP approval, as per Section eleven dash three dash nine of the Helena City Code.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the Commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission on your will, whatever it is? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Going once? Going twice? This meeting is adjourned.